We're all good.
Very good. Welcome. I will now call to order the October nine, twenty twenty five, City of South Pasadena Library Board of Trustees Meeting. Administrative Secretary Sean Fay, please call the roll.
Ed Pearson.
Here.
Dean Serwin.
Here.
Minsen Meeker.
Here.
Thank you.
We have three, that constitutes a quorum. In order to better manage the business on the agenda, general public comment will be limited to thirty minutes at the beginning of the agenda. If there are speakers remaining in the queue, they will be heard at the end of the meeting. If you would like to make public comment, general public comment for items not listed on the agenda and which are under the purview of the Library Board of Trustees, please now raise your hand on Zoom or turn in a speaker card. Sean, let's give a couple of seconds for people to raise their hands. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
No.
So there are no speakers for general public comment.
Correct.
And there being no one else present to speak, I will now declare the public comment period closed. Next item on the agenda is the reordering of additions or deletions to the agenda. Does anyone have any reordering of additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, we will continue with the next item. And that is a library director recruitment process and establishing a committee of the Library Board of Trustees. And as part of that, we are welcoming today City Manager Todd Heilmann, who discussed this whole process of library director recruitment.
Okay, thank you. Under the current municipal code, it lays out an interesting process where the library board is asked to set up an ad hoc committee to work with us and make a recommendation to me on the appointment of the library director. So what I'd like to do tonight is just going to talk about, you know, having the committee set up. I'm already working with a recruiting firm to start bringing in resumes to have a committee. I'm anticipating, given the way the code's written, to have myself, our assistant city manager and the library board subcommittee kind of whittle down to some finalists and probably breaking that up after that. And once we have the finalists identified, breaking that up into two or three interview panels. We've got some of the library staff that has to participate. I think it's great to have the library board interview the candidates and then probably myself and our assistant city manager and just moving. I've expedited the recruiter and the recruitment because I'm concerned about the holiday season. It's never a great time to be recruiting between, especially once you get mid-December. So that was sort of the reason to get things moving quickly, but we're still in the process of developing and finalizing the brochure, those sorts of things. So at this point, I want to make sure that I've got a group of folks here to work with as we're moving forward and at least get through the screening process. And then once the interview process is set up, we'll talk to the screening team as far as how that looks. But that's kind of where we are at this point. And just to know if there's any questions or of me or what I might be able to add to the conversation.
Well, so there's, how do you publicize the availability of the position and so forth?
We will. We're in the process of developing the position description, the brochure. I just, I hired a recruiter. I just went through this about a year and a half ago when we established the library system in Palm Desert. So bring in the same recruiter. He had brought forth a number of really solid candidates during that recruitment. And I know he's pretty wired in as far as where to get the word out. But at that point, once we actually, and he'll tend to break them down into, you know, two or three different categories. The ones that are clearly experienced and meet all the qualifications, there's typically a B group, which would be sort of those folks looking to work their way up. And then folks that don't necessarily meet the qualifications. So our committee would probably be focused on going through that A group, seeing if there are six or eight people we want to screen to bring in, potentially go through a three or four interview panel to be the next library director.
And what kind of, so you make this, the recruiter is saying, we need all these resumes and whatever by X date, December one.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're working through that process right now. We're actually getting the brochures developed and we'll probably take resumes through the middle of November. And then I'd like to be in a, if we have enough candidates, be in a position where we're actually doing the interview process in early December. Again, once you start hitting mid-December, you start losing your interview panels, candidates, it becomes kind of a mess. So that's sort of the process that we're looking at using at this point. Yes.
I have two questions. One, just given how small our board is, I was just curious why two, as two members of the Library Board Trustee and like, how did they share the process just generally with the entire board?
So I don't know why we ended up with a subcommittee in the code, but we did. I think right now for our screening purposes, you know, it's probably, it's probably much more efficient that way. I would suggest when we get to the interviews that the whole board be involved in the interviews. And we'll make that same offer to employee panel and then myself and the assistant manager as well. But that's just how the code reads. So it basically, it's a little ambiguous as far as process, that sort of thing. But so from my perspective, just working with the subcommittee and working with the library board from day one is the easiest way to get through this.
Okay. And then my second, sorry, second question was just kind of what's Kathy's role in the process? Because are you serving as the current director until the new position or new director is onboarded? Or are you already in like an assistant?
No, she, I've asked her to stay on as the library director until we hire her replacement. And then, and then we'll move her to assistant librarian.
And she'll be just part of the staff that works on the interview process as well?
Yeah, I may, and I may very well have her in the panel with me and the assistant manager. It's kind of a cool situation with her because, you know, I think it's one of those things, you've got the institutional knowledge, but it's going to be very important for a candidate to know that she's fully onboarded and, you know, to support whoever the director is. So I think that's going to be an important thing to share with the candidates.
Yes. When was the last time, because I know that Kathy stepped up from a previous assistant position. So when was the last time that we went through this process, if you know?
Oh, boy. I don't know.
The example that I gave you was like two thousand and three. Steve hired, he left in twenty nineteen and he was here about twelve years. So what is that, two thousand and five?
So it's been.
It's been a long time. I can't even find the job description. Can I show you the job description?
Can you speak a little bit about the process since, as you said, you've just gone through this in another similarly sized community?
Yes. Yeah, in Palm Desert, we actually took the library system away from Riverside County and established our own. So you know, Palm Desert's a city, about sixty thousand people, nine hundred thousand during the during the season between December and May. So it's an interesting community from that regard. And they just wanted more control of the library system. So what we did is exactly the process I just laid out. We brought in a recruiter that I've worked with for fifteen years with department head positions. There's a few of them that really know the library world. And he brought, you know, he identified a number of candidates. I had a screening committee, almost exactly the same process. We had just established the Library Board Trustees. They worked with us to, and the recruiter to get down to, I think it was six finalists. And we hired one gentleman actually from Glendale. Did you sort for him?
I did not. We, I know Gary well.
Yeah. And so we brought him in primarily because of his experience with establishing library systems. And he was actually doing that consulting work. I knew he wasn't going to stay that long, so I hired the library director from Santa Clarita.
Yeah.
And she's now the library director in Palm Desert. So it was an interesting thing. I knew, we brought him in simply to get us off the ground. And then we went back out and hired a very strong number two, because we knew we wouldn't keep him more than a year or two before he retired and moved on to consulting work. And so she moved right up into the director job about two months ago.
Okay, so she's been, so she's been too new to have a good, how she's working out.
She was excellent. We hired, she was the second hire we made. So she's been there.
So she stepped up.
Yeah, we brought her in for the very specific purpose of replacing Gary, who was the library director I brought in. And she had been the library director in Santa Clarita at the time.
And so she.
So we actually had two.
What I'm getting at is that not only have you been through the process, but the result of the process that we're now replicating was a good one.
Yeah, it was, it was a good one. I fired about a half a dozen library directors in the last thirty years. It's the same process. I mean, anytime you're bringing somebody new into the, into the role, it's a risk. You know, fit's always a risk. So I think, I like the idea of letting the employees sort of weigh in. Employees are employees, they're going to call other employees and find out about the directors. So you know, you might as well just include them. And then the library board, you know, every interview panel will be looking for something different. You're going to be looking for something pretty different from me, you know, in terms of the policies and some of the things that you've been working on closely with Kathy. I'm looking at, you know, fits and, you know, different managerial type skills that I need. So I think it works out well, just getting different perspectives and angles on these candidates.
Thank you.
I would think at the November meeting, you guys need to spend some time talking about what it is that you want to see in a candidate and kind of have that ready so that the committee can, you know, share that with this, the bigger team.
Yeah, as we, as we get, as we get closer to identifying candidates and thinking about when the interviews are going to be, we'll be reaching out to all of you and basically saying, you know, sometime between the time we actually screen them and bring them in, what's, what's really important to you right now? I like to have the candidates as prepared as possible. I don't want to give them too much information to where they come in coached, you know, but at least give them some perspective in terms of what you're looking for. And then we'll work with you on interview questions and that sort of thing, two or three weeks out. But it's a little quicker process than, than I would have liked. But again, you know, the Thanksgiving, Christmas holidays, throw that wrinkle in there.
Todd, when you recruited in Palm Desert, did you get a lot of outstate candidates?
We did. A lot of people, of course, a lot of people from Washington, Oregon, Colorado, that sort of thing. But that was, that was almost all of our recruitment. So I don't, I don't know why, but you know, we would, the Pacific Northwest was an interesting drop for us.
Yeah. Other comments or questions?
I also wonder, how does that line up with the next meeting, talking about the candidate and potentially wanting to have the first round of applications in by November?
So we'll, so as soon, as soon as we have, you know, enough candidates to screen, what I do is call, I call the ad hoc committee together with my, with Nick Kimble, who's my assistant, myself. We'll screen through the candidates to make sure. And once we get to three or four solid ones, then we'll get things set up in probably in early December. And I just, we just want to be sure that we've got really good candidates. So we're bringing people there that we have some confidence in and spending your time wisely. If it takes us a while to get really good candidates and it slips to January, then it slips to January.
I would my next question. Are you available and willing to?
Yeah.
This has to go till January, February.
Yeah. Yeah, I've been doing it for this year, so I can do it for three more months. I have to. Yeah.
Yeah. So, and that'll work. Once we, once we get those folks in mind, in mind there and that we're comfortable with, you know, presenting them to the interview groups, then we'll start working on every questions and that sort of thing.
Great.
Thank you, Todd.
Yep.
I had like a couple of comments. I just wanted to share, I just wanted to thank Kathy, like on record for her leadership and grateful that she's going to stay on as the assistant director and like grateful to city council and the manager for establishing that position. Like I've only been on this board for like a year and a half. And I feel like, I also work for government, I work for LA County. And I just feel like in the last several years, like government employees are asked to do so much more with less. And I feel like I've seen Kathy really juggle so much and she's very understated and I think doesn't pop herself up. And she's an amazing leader. And I've had the opportunity with Kenny to work on policies with her and her team. And I can tell like her team adores her and the operations run so smoothly. So I'm just really grateful that she's able to stay on. And, you know, I think she's really the expert and thinking about what the library needs in the future. So I'm hoping she plays a big role in like the recruiting and like interview process along with the rest of the committee members. And I am interested in joining the ad hoc committee, but I don't know if there are others.
I'd like to as well.
Yeah. And I don't know that Todd needs to stay for that conversation. They need to decide who's going to be the second committee member. Do you want to say?
I'm fine staying.
Okay.
I think you think it's okay.
I guess, one of the expectations, I think, is that Annie would be part of this subcommittee. I guess we need a motion to create a committee, a subcommittee of the board to assist with the selection of library director. Do we have to? Second. All right.
Sean, did you get that? Min moved and Dean seconded?
Was that for Min to serve on the subcommittee?
No, no, that was.
Sure.
Day one.
Sure. Okay.
All right. Well, let's go ahead then and call the roll on that motion.
Ed Pearson?
Yes.
Minsen Meeker? Dean Serwin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, the composition of the committee. I heard the expectation one other. And is that something that is the, the city's?
You can't, yeah, you can't have more than two on the subcommittee because of the Brown Act.
Brown Act, okay. Ed, I know you were previously on the board. I don't know how long ago that was. Was it by any chance back around two thousand and five? No, it was two thousand and eleven. Okay. It was sixteen, so it's not part of any of that. Worth asking. All right. Some more or something.
So is it, so it's would be Annie and then one other?
Correct. I, I would just say I will defer for Dean to be on the committee only because I guess my question is like, when do you think interviews are? Probably be during the workday. I am also switching jobs in November, so I'm a little worried. I don't want to hold up like timelines. So if you have a schedule that works better for like some of these ad hoc meetings or actual interviews, then I will defer or take my name out because I'm actually a little worried about just scheduling, just hearing about the time.
Yeah, we, we tend to try to do these like on a Friday because, you know, our work, it's a little bit easier. But, you know, if we need to do it on a Saturday, we can do it. So that's, that's really not a factor. I will bend the process to whatever you need. So.
Yeah. But if you have, if your schedule is better and.
Well, I'm relatively flexible other than Mondays and Thursdays. I, I'm just curious to do it because I'm very excited about the library and I do enjoy the process.
Yeah, I'll take myself out.
Well, do we need a motion for this? Okay. Well, we need a motion to appoint the members of the subcommittee.
So moved.
You're moving the appointment.
Dean to the.
Dean and Annie. All right. Would you mind seconding? So I don't second myself. Thank you. All right. The motion, Sean, is the appointment of Annie and Dean as the members of the subcommittee. And let's take a vote.
Ed Pearson?
Yes.
Minsen Meeker? Dean Serwin?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. That's carried and that committee is now. There's no one for my life. And from what I'm hearing, we're going to have a lot of, all of us are going to have a lot of. I think we're all into this. What I heard Todd say, and I appreciate that, and I think it's a wise decision, is that this subcommittee is going to have a narrow band and then the full committee, the full board of trustees is going to actually be involved in the interview process.
Yeah, yeah. We're doing, I'm doing exactly the same thing with the police chief interviews. We're doing those next month and kind of employ panel. And then I've got actually a council panel and citizen panel. And then myself and the assistant manager. So it's very similar setup to what we're doing there.
Great. Great. Yeah, I think it's very worthwhile since obviously the director sits in here with us every month. So it's a good idea for all five of us to have a.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's any issues. I mean, the only, the only, the only thing that we have to work through with all five of you is it is a it's a position doesn't report to you. It's a, it's a Brown Act issue. So we just have, we'll have to let the final candidates know that they're going to be interviewing with the full library board and the public may have, be able to attend. And it's just, and from my perspective, I really didn't care on the chief. On this position, I don't think it'll scare anybody away. There could be some candidates that may, may be worried about that. And as long as we let them know upfront, that's fine. But it's, it's worth it in my opinion.
It's possible that we'll have some, some people that want to attend. We don't often have people come to our meetings in general, but considering as people are probably hearing me say this, the library is both the figurative and literal center of our community. There's a lot of interest.
Yeah, and I would say that they'd be free to observe, not participate. So.
Would it be, would it be something that you think about if the subcommittee sees some very strong candidates who are, don't want to have a publicly facing interview process because of their current employment? That the subcommittee would then recommend that there not be, and that would not be part of the process, just to, if your strongest candidates don't really want to have that?
Yes, we could. The other thing, the other thing we could do, and I wrestled with this on the chief, you know, is we could break the library board up and put, you know, one, one or two with the employees, one or two with the with me, and then have another panel set up. And we could break the employees and the library board up into two panels. And then have one with me. And that way you don't have three on a panel. Because they're all recommending bodies. I didn't want to do that with the chief because I was concerned the employees wouldn't speak their mind in front of the council. In this case, I don't know that it matters that much. I think the dynamic here is very different. So just to be.
Yeah, because we'll work together to come up with questions I think would be advisable for us is that we literally do that. You're going to ask these questions, you're going to, et cetera.
Yeah.
So that it doesn't matter if we're in the room together or separate. We already know what we're going to ask.
Yeah, and I'm going to ask, I'll, I'll ask each interview panel to rank the candidates anyway. You know, from one to five, whatever it is, you know, just kind of forced rankings, you know, and we'll have all that information at the end of the day. But as long as you're not in there together interviewing them, I'm pretty sure, and I'll double check with the city attorney, that that process would work. But I think that's defensible.
And just so you have it in your mind, Annie and Kenny both term out at the end of December. So we go through this process unsuccessfully. We'll have new. Well, I don't, Kenny may want to serve again, I'm not sure. But just FYI, keep that in mind.
Yeah, I think he has one more term.
No, he's finished. But if he wants to, you know, apply for another three years, I don't know if he intends to do that.
No, but I thought you can do two consecutive. And I think there's some question about the code, whether it's two consecutive and you go off and you can do two more, or if it's just two and you're done.
Yeah.
I believe.
No, it's an open question.
In any case, we should get through this first attempt with everybody intact.
Like two other questions. Excuse me. One, with all the site planning stuff, are you looking for someone who has experience with capital campaigns?
I had a long talk with the recruiter about that. And I think it's a nice to have. I'm, I, I really don't want to focus on it too much right now for the simple reasons I don't know what the council is going to do. We're also, you know, we're planning on having a presentation to the council on November fifth. You know, and the councils, they've got a, an enviable task in front of them because we'll be out, we're going to go out and survey the community about the road program. I promised the library subcommittee, I would, I would make sure that we integrated questions there, build context as well, as we're talking to the community about the library. But, you know, they probably need fifty to a hundred million dollars to get a third to half of the roads fixed. And I'm just not sure where they're going to stand as far as peeling off twenty, thirty, forty million dollars for a new library, because that all, roads are easier, right? You, you issue the money in tranches and you can sort of spread that over tax base. A library has to be funded upfront, which has a significant impact on the debt service. So I just don't know what they're going to do. And I don't want to bring somebody here that's all excited about a new building and then many of the community or the council will say no. Then we've, then we've got a whole nother deflated person on our hands, you know. So I just don't want to, that's my concern.
And then my new question was, do you, you have the authority to appoint or it still has to go to council that you recommended council to?
I'll appoint it.
Well, one of our tasks then prior to meeting in November is to begin this process of coming up with the kinds of questions that we as a board would be asking of these candidates. So have that in mind and.
You could submit them in advance and we could prepare them for the packet. And so, you know, bring that to the table in November to talk about.
Yes, so we could do that even right now. Submit them to Kathy or inclusion in some sort of packet for next time. Okay? Excellent. Super. All right. Typically, the minutes go out shortly before the meeting. Would it be possible to have an email go out to, since two of our board are missing tonight, so that they know that we'd like to do that?
I'll, we'll, I'll get them to summarize what happened here tonight.
All right. Very good.
We're good.
Next. Todd is going to stay with us through number five with site plan stuff. If you extend the last two ad hoc committee meetings, so he's well versed, knows all about it.
I'm, I'm sorry. He bears, he bears.
No, we don't have to jump ahead. Just quickly do the minutes and then I just want to let you know that he's going to stay until we get through that item.
Right. And so item number four on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the September eleven, twenty twenty five trustees meeting. Recommended that the board review and consider approval of those minutes. Is there any public comment regarding the minutes? Then we need a motion regarding the approval of the minutes. Can I, can I make a quick note? Yes. Pretty sure I wasn't there, right? You were not, nor was I. Right. So we have one person who could viably not abstain. Can we set these aside to be done at the next meeting?
I mean, you can act on it. You don't have to have been present to vote. That's not a requirement. So we could take the vote and see what happens.
Ed, do you feel good about that?
I do.
They're very thorough. I withdraw my comment. All right. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Yes.
All right. Moved. Is there a second? Dean's seconds? All right. We have a motion and a second for the approval of the minutes. Sean, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Minsen Meeker?
Yes.
Edward Pearson?
Yes.
Dean Serwin?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, the minutes are approved. All right, item number five. The site plan ad hoc committee member, Mr. Serwin, and staff to provide an update about the ad hoc committee activity and next steps. Which of you wishes to?
Well, just to remind everyone that we, at our last meeting, we went over those three, we were options at the three different kind of price points. So that is still, nothing has changed there. And then Dean, I don't know if you want to talk about last week's meeting and, and some of the direction we got there.
It would augment what Kathy said. The high level. What we, after a lot of back and forth, your eyes were waving over what I believe we came up with, because there was some question, was that we asked for group four to reorganize the, the comparison of those three, A, B, and C. And for refresher, A is renovate, B is single story, and C is two-story. And there was some discussion regarding, some of it to me, that it felt too, I would say binary, because we kind of are saying we don't like A, so it's really a B or C. And it feels too binary because it's basically build something new that's the exact same size that we currently have, or everything we could possibly want. And as I said, you know, B plus or C minus, I think is something that we'd like to to see the opportunity for. And in trying to compare B and C especially, but A as well, it felt that it was harder to eyeball the direct comparison because C has three things that might not be in B or A, but they're not in a line. So you can't go, there's not a checkmark. There was some commentary, because a prior one was a checkmark versus a zero versus a, you know, whatever. So we asked group four to reorganize the comparison so that it would be easier to, at a quick sight, see what is missing or what is added, especially in terms of things like the number of seats. And do we really need to, does it make that much difference if we go from two seats or twelve seats to fourteen seats in a particular part of the room? And that way we could maybe give our advice to council, which I believe is our next step, to look at something that could be, we definitely want. Something that could be, we definitely want to. You know, if, if, if the decision, I don't wanna put a, a decision on the, 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 but if the decision is we want a new building. Uh, to say, we'd like a new building, we don't necessarily need everything in C, but we'd like more than what's in B. Can we do, can we look at that as our proposal, uh? Simple things like. We want a room for dance and exercise and we want a multipurpose room, we don't need two rooms. We could have one room that does both of those and, uh, it could be. A little more than a multipurpose room might have in it, so that it can do all of that and there, we could save however many millions of dollars. Uh, because we don't have that additional square footage, the additional equipment, et cetera, et cetera. So there seems like there's ways that we could do that, but at the end of the day, uh, there was a lot of discussion, uh, thank you again, Todd, for being there and for being so. Patient with us, um, and, and just being yourself, being who you are, which is even solid, direct. And, and thoroughly prepared. Um. It is a question of. Financing. Uh, because unfortunately, we're not five years ago. When there were literally tens of millions of dollars being thrown around for new libraries. Uh, whether it be from county, state, or federal. So, uh, then it's a question of what's our timeline and how. Optimistic are we that by the time we get to the point that we need that money, that there, there might be those, so. Uh, I think part of the discussion was also, I don't think, I know part of the discussion also revolved around the issue of what is the next step? And what will be the next step that's necessary so that we can actually begin? The process of seeking those grants that might be available, not just from private, uh, in- investment, but, uh. Uh, and private charity and such, but, uh. City, state, county, federal. Federal's probably nothing at this point, but, um. And, and when we can look to, to that being a reality that. We, you know, if we can get twenty million out of a bond measure, but we need another twenty million to, minimum to build something that would be reasonable to make it worth doing. Uh, what's the feasibility of that? So is that a good summary?
I think so, and Todd already kind of brought up the idea of it's the council's decision ultimately. To determine, you know, based on the research we're doing in committee, to see what's feasible, what the committee, uh, sorry, what the community would support. Um, so there's a lot of unknowns, but I think Todd's, um, objective was to make sure there was at least one option. That is likely feasible versus what we did in two thousand three and two thousand four, which is go through design work and then.
Sure.
Yeah, nothing happened, so I think that was a good kind of pivot in terms of the option we had going in to make sure that there's at least something, um, that's. Truly viable.
I have a question about the financing part, I guess, um, and I feel like you might have shared this at a previous meeting and I can't recall, so. Apology that it's, uh, too clickative, but. Generally, for other libraries in the area that have recently undergone like capital campaigns, like how much is public funding versus through bonds or? Grants from federal, state versus like what we would need to raise through a capital campaign through private donors, because I just. I have been with a couple nonprofits that have gone through large capital campaigns, probably not the scale of this, but. Look in the town, a lot of people in neighboring towns have quite a bit of money, I think, um, and again, I understand current. I think fiscal climate is challenging, but I am just kind of curious, like San Marino and Alhambra is a fifty, like, what are we?
Threshold, what's the threshold to make you think of, or council think, oh, how could we not do this?
And then is there an opportunity to bring on, again, not to, it's hopefully not like a waste of money, but. You know, when I worked at Union Station Homeless Services and when we started our capital campaigns like fifteen years ago. I know they brought on development consultants that like did assessments of where could we raise money from foundations, private donors? This is how much it's gonna take and this is what we think we can get, and I'm just kind of curious if we've done that work.
We, we haven't right now, they're, they're operating at such a high level, um, they're up at a hundred thousand foot level right now and. This is group four and I wa- I was getting frustrated with them because we started seeing out, the only option coming in at like sixty some million, I'm like. You're, you're just setting the community up to be deflated again, so, you know, we asked them to bring in a mid, min, min, mid-max of options. Their max is sixty thou- sixty million, and you know, I, I think the thing also you gotta keep in mind is. Construction costs are rising so fast, I, we're always telling council this, you know, get, get these things out the door because we're seeing even on buildings. Four and a half percent, five percent inflation every year, so when you see a sixty million dollar number, if you can't get to it for three years. That building just went up seventy million, um, you know, and, and so that, that's the issue, if, I, I think, I. I keep hearing that, you know, about the fundraising here, and I think you're probably right, there's probably some amount that can be raised, I just don't know where the council's gonna be.
Not gonna be twenty million dollars.
Yeah, and, and, and so it's very possible, we did this in Palm Desert, I mean, we, we built a thirty million dollar facility for a community that's three times bigger than this. And kind of re-engineered it backwards, um. That's what you don't have the benefit of here, you've got, we're, we're sort of talking pie and discussing, the conversations are kind of reversed right now. Where we're trying to get some idea of how much money we might need to build the building, and their square foot costs are about the same as what we saw. But so I, I have confidence that that's it, but you know, if, if, it's kind of like all of us, we don't go in and say. We want our ideal house, that's gonna be ten million dollars, but we can only afford two and a half. And that's sort of the approach they're taking, it, you know, it's kind of what can we get done, once the council decides. What, what, would they be comfortable, first of all, you know, well, do we think the voters would support it, and then what would they be comfortable, what would be, you know, would we fundraise? To build it up, then you start in designing it backwards, you know, and saying what can we get for that, just like all of us would do with our own homes. And this whole process, we just had to slow it down, at least we've got an idea of what, how many square feet we can get, how they lay it out. Is a whole nother discussion right now, but.
That's the next.
And I think that's been part of my frustration with this group is, and it's not entirely their fault, they weren't, they weren't hired to do, um, design drawings for us. They were hired to be very, you know, artistic and thoughtful and get all, but. I think the next step here would be is if we, if we think we're in the thirty-five to forty million dollar range, which is where I think we are, I don't think the council's gonna support that. They're not gonna put the road program off to build the library, and this, my guess. Um, you know, could, would they potentially peel off twenty million and then fundraise more, maybe, I don't know, um, they might. I know that there's members of the council that think exactly like you do, that there are people here that, uh, would donate, um, I don't know the community well enough to argue with them. I have no idea, um, but I think we have to have that discussion and then, and then get into design drawings because. You cannot access grant money, foundation money without design drawings, if the building's not ready to go, they're not gonna give you the money. So that would be the next step is to spend one or two million dollars, which is what you're gonna have to do. In order to come up with a, a, a building that can be built, that's shovel-ready to go after those monies. Whether it's private donations, whether it's foundations, or whether it's state grants. And so the, the ask of the council, if we think there's community support and they're willing to peel off some money is, will you spend the money? To, to get us to design drawings. So that's the next step there, and it's, it's a big question, I haven't even had the chance to talk to the council, this is our first, first time he's hearing this, so. Uh, that's kind of where we are right now. I still think the B plus, if they're, if they're right, they're focused, they're so fixated on square footage. If they're right and we're at forty million, I don't see how this gets off the ground. And, you know, and, and unless I'm really wrong and we can fundraise fifteen or twenty million. Um, I just don't see it, we're not seeing those kind of grants out there right now that you saw a few years ago, that money's just dried up with the state budget problems.
Sure.
Yeah.
What, what, I, I'd like to point out a couple of things that I think keep getting lost in the discussion. Um, and it's, it's been a, a challenge with the ad hoc committee, um, because I'm certain of the stakeholders, I can feel that they're forgotten. Um, we're not talking about building a new library. We're talking about building a new library, senior center and, and community center, all three of those things, and I'd like to. Make sure that there's an emphasis, uh, discussed with council. Intent. Um. That is clear on that fact, that this is not asking for forty million dollars for the library, this is asking for. To use your number approximately thirty-five to forty million dollars for the campus. In library park that will contain a revitalized library, senior center and community center that will serve. All of those constituencies, both now and, and part of what, um, the challenge is, is looking at. Uh, based on arena numbers and other things like that, what are we anticipating our, our population to be in twenty forty-five? And, you know, there's the eight, eighty seventy-nine, is that, am I getting that correct, uh, you know, that could. Ten times, I think, is what they're looking at, uh, the numbers, um, potentially, so, uh. We have to take consideration of, we have a. Facility that, um, has issues with it, that will require significant amounts of money. Merely to make it compliant with current standards and rules and laws. Um, so what's the delta on tearing it down, building something, even? If it's B, which is, we're just gonna replace what's here, but with something that actually will last another fifty years or more. Um, and, and I, I don't, I would rather have B than nothing. But I would, I, I believe that our community will step up for B plus, and I feel very strongly based on my own personal. Experience with capital campaign, uh, as well as other, uh, revenue-related, uh. Measures in our city that we do have a tendency or have had a tendency to step up in large numbers and say, yeah, I'll, I'll foot a little bit more. So that my community will continue to be moving forward.
Yeah. And sorry, I just wanna make sure I understand the process, so you're saying in November, you guys are going to the city council? And then in November, the city council would decide like, I, I, I'm trying to understand the like.
So there, there's a couple steps here, um, we're gonna, we're gonna ask the subcommittee to present their analysis recommendation. Uh, to council on November fifth.
Alright.
Um. The subcommittee asked me, I was getting ready to, we've been working with a polling firm right now, to, they asked me to kind of hold off until they are able to present to council, so. Uh, we'll get these questions, if, you know, and test the questions, as Dean's stating on the campus idea, along with the roads. There is a. There is a bond falling off the school district this next year, which has some blunting effect, it wouldn't have that much of a blunting effect on the library campus.
Because of the need.
Because of the upfront financing.
Right, understood.
Um. You know, just kind of see where they, where they're, where they're at, and what I had told the councils, we'll be back after we basically test, you know. Are folks generally in support of the roads? Um, are they generally supportive of the, um, campus idea, would they be, does the campus idea help or hurt the roads? If it's neutral or helps, fine, um, if it hurts, the council's probably in a pickle there.
Understood.
Um, you know, and so they'll ha- and they'll have that decision, where we also need to start laying out financial scenarios to them, but if they say. We're, we're ready to go ahead and, you know, we're willing to, we're willing to peel up X amount of money, uh, for this idea as well as the roads and we're, you, you know, and. Um. We'll put it out to the voters, and if it passes, we're gonna need, we're gonna need to get into, um. Design box pretty quick. The closer that building gets to high twenties, low thirties, and can be value engineered. The more reality there is, if council's on board. The closer it gets to forty million, the less likely it's gonna happen. So it's just, we just can't support that, even if we got a hundred million dollars, we can't support issuing fifty million dollars up.
So, Todd, so the design docs would be after the actual referendum?
Yeah, I think, yeah, there's no, there. If, if, because if the referendum fails. Just the money.
Yeah.
So it, it would have, we would have to know if the people supported, if they did, that'd be the first thing, I'd take that, councils, we need to get an architect under, under contract to start working with us on budget. Um. You know, but they're ultimately, so, so we'll present it, then we start working on the survey, then they have to have a. A thorough discussion about what they wanna do and how much they wanna ask the voters for.
I think, I'm just trying to understand with the polling, I, I, I understand generally, but it's like, are we? I just would hate the polling or the conversation to be pitting roads or community campus, like, I wanna understand, like, how do we get to vote? And if it's slowing like maybe a B plus or a C minus, like, uh, community campus so that we can have better roads quicker or like. Maybe better roads over a longer timeframe, so we could have, like, I just wanna understand, so it's not one or the other, but it's like, how do we get to vote?
Well, I think, I, I think the council has two options, right, I mean. They actually have three options, one of them's do nothing, but they be, you know, one of the options is to split the propositions. Um, and I, I just, I just can't imagine people saying that the roads are less important than the library in this community. I mean, I can tell you the, I, we get claims about every week.
Not, not. It depends, it depends on what roads you're living on, and what neighborhoods, because there's a lot of people that aren't thinking about the roads, but are thinking about. The library because their roads are just fine, though there, I think that's a fifty, that's not the reality.
That isn't, that isn't even ten percent of the roads we've found, geez, so I, I, so I, I think that's just something we have to think about, right? If, I don't know how they're gonna react, and I think, I think with council, we owe them the ability to think about this. Big picture, we have some, some pretty optimistic people on the council, and, and there's people that think they can fundraise. For this, and if, and that probably would help a, a bond question, a property tax question, so. But we owe them the homework right now, and, and so that's, that's why, uh, you know, they don't wanna put something up there, watch it with iron flames, the community's deflated, and we're back. Ten more years, you know, I mean, so that's the issue.
So would this be, or, so the next step is? Architecture plans if you're gonna move forward in some engineering, so it's not, you know, are you? If that doesn't happen, it doesn't, nothing.
We would, we would need to put this, we would need to put it out, the council, if they decided to put it out to referendum. And, and, and include the financing, uh, for the library, if it passes, we would go in for plans and, and, because then. You, you know, you, you know, you've got a tranche of money coming in to at least fund design. The earthwork and start rolling on the building, then it's a matter of how much, you know, what's the difference, so you've got either raised through grants or donations, whatever it may be. But I just wouldn't, I wouldn't spend the money to put it, to do the, this design work unless they, unless the voters approve this measure.
A couple of points I'd like to, I'd like to ask, you obviously don't have to give me an answer now, Kevin, but. Um, I know that the, uh, friends has been looking at this for dec- literally decades, uh, twenty-first century, uh, et cetera.
Yeah.
Um, and there's, there's, uh, money. Do you have any idea in terms of what kind of a contribution, obviously, it's not gonna get us millions of dollars, but we already have two point seven? Or something like that?
I think, I think that's earmarked for the specific purpose though, right?
But that would be part of the new bill, we wouldn't build that first and then tear it down and build, so we already have. Approximately two point seven million dollars before we go out and ask for anything. If the friends could give us another three, we're at three million dollars at a thirty million dollar building, we have ten percent before we go out to anybody. City financing, public, private, uh, uh, you know, sponsorship, again, I'll, I'll point out that when the ad hoc committee went and looked at. Uh, several, uh. Newer libraries in the last ten, fifteen years, you could not walk five feet without seeing a plaque that so-and-so had donated for this. So in addition to outright, just give us some money, um, you know, the, some of the wealthier people who want to have their name on a room. On the building itself, there's, there are people in our town that could give us ten million dollars.
And I know that we already as an organization have some, like the twenty-first century fund, we have arms that. Are equipped and ready to go do that, if I get some more personnel and people kind of, but, but we're not setting up any committees, we have that locked and loaded, ready to go. If we're able to present it, you know, just like what you're saying is, hey, we wanna raise enough money for a hundred chairs, and I need a plaque on a chair, and a chair costs you. Five thousand, whatever it is, I'm making up numbers, but we, we could very feasibly do that, and we have the. We have the bookkeepers to help us right now.
Well, I think, I think as Lynn said, i- i- if you can show that people are donating, that obviously is huge in terms of building confidence, right? And I think she, she's right, I mean, the que- next question is, do you bring a firm on to help you? You know, that, that, dude, that, that's what they do, is raise money for these things.
Well, I guess the question is, is. From say, this formula. Time to raise money for a building that isn't happening yet and we don't have pictures for it is way harder than as the friends of the library selling plaques on chairs. Time to raise money for a building that isn't happening yet and we don't have pictures for it is way harder than as the friends of the library selling plaques on chairs. That would eventually go into a fund for the library, you know, so it's not saying that, hey. Once we have plans and we know we need to raise. Ten million dollars per se. But I already can say, hey, our organization was really successful and we have three million dollars for any furniture, any technology that we need. And you know, I'm wondering if that's kind of a helps everyone realize, hey, we've already done. Some of that fundraising, and I just don't, I don't know the order of how to properly start. Asking our really gracious donors in our community without getting ahead of ourselves. I think that's what is the area.
You need, you need to, you need to let the council have the discussion.
Oh, yeah.
About, about, about what if they even wanna put on the ballot, and if they do, that then then you're.
And I just want, I'm, so I'm throwing out that the Friends. Are in a decent position to get a ball rolling in the right direction if we needed some kind of steam, and I think we would have a team that are really happy, so. If that feeds the discussion, but again, I'm not planning, getting ahead of being like selling the right for our building.
Do you feel that it would be beneficial to have Kevin at the meeting where the council is going to be making this decision? To make public comment?
To to put, you you mean to put the item, which which meeting?
But the meeting where we're going to present to council and ask them to decide whether they want to include. The library in the financing because.
Oh, I'm sure they'll wanna hear from you. I mean, yeah.
Ballpark the fundraising capacity. That we could execute on as part of a strategy dovetail with what we're doing on the farm.
I'm sure they'd wanna hear from you, don't you think?
And maybe uh several people from the Friends of the Library come to that meeting, which will be on when?
I don't know yet. I I slowed the process down that uh your all request last week, so uh Nick and I are meeting with the uh. Uh the survey team next week. We still have to run some financial scenarios, and my guess is we'll be polling November. Um maybe end of November or early December.
But you, the council has to authorize doing.
They already did.
So just knowing when. We wanna get the cheerleaders.
Yeah, it'll, when, when we present the results and they start having these discussions, my guess is they'll, they'll wanna. Meeting or two, they're not gonna make that decision that night, but I I think they'll want a meeting or two to think about it, the heavy decision. Uh you know, we just sort of unloaded this on them in July where we were financially with the CIP and. We tried to give them plenty of time to think, you know, about, you know, how big do you wanna go? Wh- what, what do we think people will support? You know, we'll see, we'll see where the community is.
It might not be a bad idea if someone or ones from the Friends wanted to just go to each uh upcoming council meeting. To uh praise the library, uh discuss the support that the community has for the library and the senior center.
No, I think that's a great idea. It seems more timely than ever.
When it's not on agenda, then it becomes a general public.
Any other questions for Todd or Dean?
All right, I have one. So what's the next step for group four? I, I know we kind of.
Yeah, so the, the group four is finishing the content and the site plan and the executive summary and all of that for the presentation to council on. November fifth. So the ad hoc committee last week decided they wanna have an additional special meeting. To take another look at what that presentation will consist of, and they are revising it now. Um based on the direction they got from the ad hoc committee and from the city manager, so that's where we are. So we'll have another, one more ad hoc. Committee meeting before November fifth and.
November fifth council meeting is the ad hoc committee presenting or group four?
I haven't really talked to you about.
Yeah, we, I, I, that was something we asked, honestly.
I was, I was, I was for the ad hoc committee, honestly. I I think it's a stronger, they, they've, they've got a big command of what's going on, I think. I think it's much stronger coming from the ad hoc.
Maybe you and I can talk about that, because there's fifteen of them, so like how that.
I think, I think we, we come en masse and we have a designated spokes for.
Yeah, I, I think you guys got a really solid handle on everything, and in fact, you, you almost were. Uh more prepared than group four at the last meeting to talk about the ins and outs, so I I think that would go along with council. And we're trying to get, we're trying to get the slideshow knocked down to like ten or twelve. At most, you know, in response to the comments from the ad hoc committee as well.
Yeah, we, we, we did feel that uh belaboring forty slides. Uh when, when council has a full presentation that they can refer back to, we, we do want, we wanna make sure that they know. That all that information is there, but we, we can get to it much more quickly uh to the meet.
And then at that point, our contract with group four is over once they hand over.
Yeah.
I think there's finality to that.
Yeah, understood.
All right, this is great discussion.
Nice meeting all of you. I'm not being rude. All right, we'll be in touch.
Oh, Todd, you might not be able to get out.
Yeah, if, if there been some lively ad hoc. Uh we're on to item six, which is library operations update here from town.
Um so I just put a few things in here. Uh program wise, we have our. Uh silent film screening with the live accompaniment coming up for Halloween, partnering with um uh. For the group again, the non-alcoholic beverage company, so that should be a lot of fun. Um then we had this week, there's, I think it's on social media, we have the fire department here for all the storytimes, and we have Saturday, they'll be here too. Really fun.
Oh, that's great.
Big turnout and lots of kids and great pictures of firefighters holding babies, like we can't hold babies, people's babies, but firefighters can get away with. Anything, so there, it's really good. So that was a lot of fun and it, it's uh fire prevention, safety, we, or something, so we did. Um barks and books, which we had been doing prior to COVID, is back. Yeah, it's really, this dog is, you know, cute. Um so that's really fun. Uh. It's popular, people are signing up for their slot, and so everyone's happy that that's back. Um Lego Free Play, we're doing that more often now. It's really a successful program, a lot of families, uh multi-generational, you know. Everybody's down the floor together. Um we have the Los Angeles clarinet choir for Hispanic Heritage Month. Um and that was a nice program. And then just uh you have it here, the summer reading program. Wrap-up brochure, you may recall, Kevin, that typically we had provided like a written narrative. And I asked the staff if they could do something like this instead. Um so it's a little bit more of a promotional piece that you guys can refer to and that I think um. People who participated in summer reading program, they're like, oh, you know, oh, let's look at that. So I think that um. I think we'll do this going forward, and if you have any comments or input about it, let me know, but I'm excited because I thought. Kind of kind of better way to communicate.
Yeah. So lovely, I'm, I know everyone on our board and members are gonna be. I'm also wondering, would this be something that would be appropriate to like submit? To the people making decisions on whether or not we're gonna rebuild this library and say, look at how it's. Look at what was some of the stuff we do. I just don't know how that would work.
Cause the friend did this, right? Friends wanted to come and make public comments about the importance of the library in our community, and this is one example of it.
But exactly, yeah, I just think that would be great for the larger community, so you can maybe some of our council members. See this, and I'm very poignant.
Yeah, not that I'm trying to stack the deck.
No, I wanna make sure everyone has as much information.
Exactly.
Going into the decisions.
We, we talked about that at, at some length with um with Todd at the ad hoc committee, because. The, the city cannot advocate past a certain point, but the city can educate all the way through. Um and there is a, a need to make sure that people understand uh that the, this building. Which isn't that old is. Forty-some years old already and in poor health. Uh and not a great design. So um anything we can do to make sure that we, we constantly reminding people. The importance of the library and the importance of, of. Renewed rebuilding.
So.
Thank you for this.
Yes, enjoy that. Um operationally, just a few things. Um Olivia uh worked hard to get us a grant. Um some of it is in kind, we've got a number of um supplies and training and access to a. Kind of an emergency preparedness planning software product. Um but she also got funding, so we're gonna get new fireproof cabinets for a number of the uh local history. Pieces, collections that are not properly protected right now. Um it also included a, an assessment by the Northeast Document. Conservation Center people who, they're the, the cream of the crop in this area, so they did a full. Assessment of the facility and how the collections are stored and what are the risks and what should we be focused on, which the list is very long of all the things that. Are not right and that we should be doing differently and better. Um and then out of that, there's a, this was the first round of this particular grant. There's a second round, which we also applied for. Um and so we'll see, that's more like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or something. And it was, I think we were looking at um replacing the windows, you know, some of the other bigger things that are, need to be done. Um. And it was a rush to get it between when we finished this assessment and the due date was like two days, so we said, let's just get it in there. If we then get the money and decide, oh wait, we don't need that much for windows or whatever, maybe.
Is that a matching grant or is that just a straight grant?
That's straight.
Lovely.
Yeah, but we'll see, we'll see. I, I, and I found out after the fact that um. The Preservation Foundation talked to the city and had Lucy apply, so the city applied. Quite, so we may be competing against one another, so uh we were not coordinating. Again, it was. We had like two days and I think she knew about it for like a week, so we just, it was sort of a surprise. Um. Staffing uh some new information, the city uh completed its negotiations with the employee association, so they just adopted new. MOUs, memorandum of understanding to take us through twenty twenty-eight. Um a big part of this process was a class and compensation study to make sure or see. How our salaries and classifications compare to um like eight or nine, I forget. Uh comparable kind of cities. Um and in general, our city people were not. Paid even kind of up to like the mid-range, so quite a few um salaries were increased through the class and compensation study. Um I mean, no one, the city did a really good job of figuring out what can we give people now, but how can we make it? You know, the benefit is to stay a little longer and eventually we'll get you higher, like you can't just raise somebody's salary thirty percent on day one, so. Um so that was nice. Some of our staff did um were. Under the mark and got a little bit of raise, some didn't get any, uh just depended on, on the study. Um so a couple of other things that happened, um. Uh we obviously made a long retired, they re-titled that position, those positions that were. Public services manager and support services manager to just library manager. Um which is a little bit of a weird name, I asked for something else, but that's what they gave us typically, library manager sort of signifies like a branch manager and a bigger system. But they said you can call it whatever you want in terms of your work title, so um library manager is, is that position. Eliminated the digital services manager position that we never used, Phil tried to recruit for, nothing. That was from twenty seventeen. Um we eliminated a full-time library clerk position, which had been vacated years ago, and that's. How we got the children's library in, we kind of converted that, so that's just been sitting on the books, not filled, so we got rid of that. Um we did retitle uh our part-time aides and clerks to titles that are more. In keeping with other libraries, make it easier in the future to compare these classifications. Um uh some of our aides and clerk titles to us meant something else. Everywhere else, sort of. So I think that those were good choices. We now have, the aides are called clerks, the clerks are called assistants. We're not. We're not quite, don't have our heads quite wrapped around it yet. We need to stop saying aides, but um. And they did get, it did get, um those folks did get a raise, uh so we are looking at trying to. Tie that in with some new responsibilities and holding them a little bit accountable for some things that we haven't.
What, what's the nomenclature that's new?
The nomenclature is our, we had part-time aides, which is like our entry-level position, those are the people that. Shell the books, empty the book drop and work the circulation desk, which is what's different a lot.
Aides, we're using.
No, aides are now clerks.
Clerk, okay, clerk is the new word.
Yeah, so aides signifies typically.
We had clerks before.
So the problem for us is that, uh so aides and pages are often the lowest level and they shell books. That's all they do. They don't serve the customers, they don't work at the desk. So we're calling our, we were calling our people aides and. They're, they're clerks, yeah. They're not aides, you know, if you look at other cities and how people. Name their positions, so just to again, be a little more consistent with what other, other cities do, um so that if. You know, you're trying to compare, someone has their resume, it, it means something if you see someone as a clerk versus an aide. Um so clerk, so aides became clerks, uh clerks became assistants. The uh we, we added a part-time reference librarian position, which is sort of. Equivalent of what we used to, had been calling for many years, the substitute librarian pool. Um these are the people that come in and pretty much just work the reference desk. They may do other librarian duties, they may do some collection development, they, they do something. But they're really coming in to staff the reference desk. Um and. That the city, those people used to be paid at a lower rate than the. Part-time librarians, like the part-time children's librarians, which have a much broader ranges of duties and complex. Complexity in their duties. Um but the last time they adopted the part-time uh P S E A M O U. Those salaries were raised, so we're, we've been paying the people that come in to just sit at the desk. Not just sit, come in to work the desk, the same as we pay Olivia or Alexis. So we pick that, which is a good thing. Um so that we now have a classification for reference librarian, part, it's part-time only, there will be no full-time people in that category. Um and then the city as a whole renamed administrative secretary to administrative assistant. And we actually, you may recall, we had Michael, we had like a, a someone helping us in admin. But we recruited that with our type of clerk, like our downstairs library clerk job description, which isn't the same, I mean, totally different job. So this is great. Now we added this, this administrative assistant part-time, so when we go to recruit to fill Michael's vacancy. We're actually recruiting for the job that the person will be doing, um because it would have been hard to recruit for this job with a. Totally different job description. Um so again, the one library manager position is, is. Vacant, eliminated, that was made a position. Um I am stepping into the assistant director position. So uh and that's the essentially your mainest position is now. It's gone and we have an assistant director position. We still have ten full-time positions, no, no additional full-time positions. Um and we have some vacancies now, and now that these are, kind of these classifications have been adopted and. And things are settling down a little bit, we'll, we'll start to fill some of these vacancies that we have. And that is all that I have in, I don't know if anybody has questions about anything.
No, no, I, I think, and thank you, Kathy, for sending that out early uh this month, so that we could uh be prepped on it. All right, well, we're gonna move next to uh communications. Um board president is not with us tonight, so we'll go with board member communications. Anybody have anything to say?
You're sitting in for the president, so why don't you go?
Okay, well, I will go first.
And you have something for us this month?
I do. Uh in August, um well, the uh Altadena library system has a small branch library. In West Altadena that had been closed for quite a while before the fire. But had been under the, the process of, you know, putting, putting it back together. I had the wonderful privilege of going to the reopening of that library in early August. And to see the community and how it treasures a library, it was just so uh fulfilling. And a super um indication of how important libraries can be to a community. Uh this is the Bob Lucas Library in uh West Altadena. Um it was an amazing event.
And they're, they're doing their big renovation on the main library as well, so that's forthcoming, and there was an article in the review today, I think, about the. Sierra Madre Library, which is coming. library, which is coming, getting the, well, twenty twenty fifth. I don't know how early in the year, but they'll be finished with their big renovation. And not even just a renovation, they're, they really added a whole big piece and a lot of square footage. So yeah, a lot of these projects that got some funding out of that state four hundred and thirty million dollars that came out that was available three years ago are starting to, those are projects are kind of coming to fruition.
Uh, years ago, I had a client who left some money to the Altadena Library System. And so uh, when they reopened it, they made a little outside area, the Janet Edge Garden, Reading Garden or something. It was very cool. Yeah.
Dean? Uh, well, I don't want to rain on Min's parade, um, but I I do want to uh express my uh extreme gratitude uh to our uh current and still uh standing in director uh Kathy Billings for the, not just last six years, but your entire career here in South Pasadena and especially for taking on so many additional jobs that were never part of your job description since you were talking about uh that issue of of uh job descriptions and you've done uh them all uh with a fun and graciousness. And I I cannot tell you how pleased I am to hear that you're actually not just, not just because as Todd uh led into, that you'll be here to support the new director, but that you'll be here. So.
Thank you. I feel like since twenty seventeen, when they redid the org chart, we've been like filling the holes. So they eliminated the children's librarian and made an assistant director. So then we had to eliminate a clerk to make a children's library. And then we had to eliminate, you know, like it's been moving around and now the vacancy is back where it started in admin. So I I think for the library and I think Todd came to agree that long term, we do need uh another kind of executive in this department. We need an assistant director. Um, the original kind of proposal had been, oh, we'll get a management analyst. Um, I I think that this is much better for the library long term. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Min?
I just want to echo Dean. I just want to thank Kathy, but also your entire team. Every time I come and I read this, I'm just like, I can't believe there's only ten of you. You guys are doing so much and you know, there's so many events and amazing things happening and you're working on the site planning council. It's amazing. So thank you. And we're just so grateful for your leadership and that you're staying on um in your new role. And I think just especially during this transition time, anything we all can do as a board to support you and your team, please let us know. I know it's hard to, like we're volunteers, we're not here day to day, but anything uh we can do, let us know. I will.
Uh, John, do you have anything you would like to share?
Uh, so council met last week and we um discussed ball bouts on Fair Oaks.
At length.
Yeah, so uh strangely enough, this create, this is a uh intersection of two paradigms. One is getting traffic through so that we don't have traffic jams and the other protecting pedestrian safety. The paradigm is shifting, but it's, it's a rough shift for a lot of people. The ball bouts were very unpopular, but they have uh the statistical advantage of shortening the crossing distance and protecting pedestrians and making cars behave by narrowing the traffic lanes. Uh, so in connection with trying to make a more, a more intelligent, connected computer optimized traffic system on Fair Oaks, we have to address the ball bouts. There was some design issues. We were presented with the option of removing several, removing a couple or basically modifying one. Uh, and we just chose to just modify one. So they'll mostly stay the way they are. Uh, there's, it's not, they're not optimally designed. There's some sharp corners, which is not great. Um, we might want to do some landscaping, but ultimately we're keeping the ball bouts uh to prioritize pedestrian safety. That was both the commission's concern and seems to be what the, what the community really wants. Uh, the other big issue is our uh moving target of a tree or tree ordinance. Um, we have been working on that. We've had four council meetings or something like that. Um, the uh, the fires, of course, and the home insurance crisis have initiated a real demand for a simplified, workable, timely tree removal process so that homeowners can get insurance without being denied or canceled. Um, people can remove trees that are causing structural damage, all kinds of things. So um, we had a system that on paper seemed, looked like it worked, but it really wasn't in practice. So we streamlined it. Uh, we create a lot more rationality about getting trees removed when it just doesn't make any sense. Uh, the council missed one, a couple of issues, and so they pulled it back at the last uh meeting and we're gonna be doing a little bit of reworking of the tree ordinance. Um, and uh, we had a lot of kind of comment on the issue that we missed. Uh, so we're, we're gonna try to make sure we uh broaden the the appeal for for everybody. And I think that was really the only two big issues.
Can I ask you a question about the tree ordinance?
Yeah.
I'm hearing odd things. Um, what I was told is there will be a requirement that all pine trees are removed. Is that?
No.
That did not suit the make any sense whatsoever.
No, I, so, so it's gonna, it's gonna, uh, a separate process is because of the new fire maps. And so in connection with the new fire maps that will be uh creating you know, vegetation management and risk issues around the high fire areas, which are vastly expanded. We're probably going to adopt priorities of different trees. And so, you know, there's some trees that are far better, you know, the natives, the legacy trees, you know, the oaks and all of that. They're far more fire resistant than the Italian cypresses, which are basically Roman, ready to be Roman candles as a lot, you know, even in their, even when they're fully watered. So um, there'll be some of that. There might be some policy preferences against pines. It's not going to be a removal per se from what I understand. Now, uh, that's on the, that's on the fireproofing. There's gonna be defensible space needed around some homes. That might be an insurance requirement. That might eventually be a regulatory requirement. We have to have, you know, vegetation clearance around your home, especially if you're in a high fire zone. Um, so there's a bunch of moving parts. Um, we have to rewrite the whole tree ordinance because it's not, it's poorly organized. And so the rewrite that we did, which we thought was gonna happen, we actually passed it the first time. We pulled it back. So uh, stay tuned. No, nothing's got to be required. But if a property owner has, the bottom line is if the property is going to be able to show structural damage, interference with, you know, their use of the, of their property or uh insurance cancellation or threat of cancellation, they're going to be able to remove a tree. Um, and.
We're gonna lose twenty to thirty percent of the damage.
Uh, not necessarily. It really depends on if the showing, I mean, otherwise, if, then we have owners who are dealing with property damage and lack of insurance. So we have to, we have to reset the policy notes. Um. Anyway, lots of public comment. Um, and you know, people put up false tree reward or uh notices to try to generate pressure that way. So stay tuned, more on trees while we're in the city.
Welcome. Thank you. Uh, Kevin, friends?
Yeah, uh, no big movement in the friends. We have our our retreat next meeting, so look out for some information, those who come to our meetings. Um. I I know that the library just put in a request for a couple of things that will be taken up at our next meeting. I know one of them, I believe, is some equipment and for the children's library. And then the second is a um mobile library kind of bike to drum up a little publicity that the staff is really excited about.
Very excited.
Yeah, so we're finally moving on that. I know we've been talking about it for a long time, but that'll be a motion at our next meetings. I know uh the library will get some, some good goodies uh for our community to enjoy. Um, other than that, um, it sounds like we'll, we'll try to rally a little support when we get the message that, that the that the city is going to be taking up a discussion of the library.
It's time.
Yeah, exactly. And I think that we will have some passionate advocates and help them have a little face time.
Yeah, and I should add that the city council, you may not see them in a library, but they, they are often in the community room and senior center for various events. So they're very familiar with this facility and its importance.
That's it for me.
Okay, and for our friends liaison.
Yeah, you know, there's not, um, I, I feel like I'm a color commentator in sports, you know, I'm not doing play by play because that's what Kevin does, but I I I do want to again laud them for the professionalism, the organization uh that they have is amazing uh to to behold. And um, I would encourage anyone to to just come to one of the meetings and just see structurally how together they are and and the, the.
You're always invited.
Yeah, the, the clarity that they, they strive for, the number of subcommittees that they have that are doing substantive work, not just, you know, planning a party, but really getting into it and developing policy and uh dealing with finances, a lot of finances. Uh, the number of, the number of different funds that that they have because of bequests and things like that. Um, it, it really is a, 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 a joy to watch. Um, and to know that we have those people who are willing to to take the time and really make the effort. And I want to thank you, Kevin, because it must be very uh complicated to to manage all of those moving parts.
Luckily, they're really amazing moving parts. I mean, everyone on our team is just like we knock it out of the park every time they touch something.
They, they come up for their, you know, when, when it's time for their report, they've got everything there, lots of documentation. They're able to explain it. Uh, so yeah, just, just thank you for, for uh, and thank the friends uh for everything they do.
Yeah, it's also incredible what our bookstore brings in, all of that. You know, those are just some numbers too that have just blow my mind. Next time I'll, maybe I'll have a year to date accounting from them and you'll be like, I mean, it's close to twenty to thirty thousand dollars a year bring in easily from the bookstore.
When and where are your meetings?
Our meetings are every third Thursday at six o'clock. Usually we are here in the community room next, or sorry, in the Bradbury Conference Room here, right where we're sitting. Um, next we are, I guess next week is our meeting. It'll be a little different. We're gonna be at the Gill House. And maybe I can send out and a little invitation, but we're having kind of a different retreat. We get out of the library, eat a, eat some food and have a change of scenery. So, um, but otherwise every third Thursday we're here. Yeah. Um.
Yeah. Lucky.
I have just, I do have a couple of things this week, this month. Um, the city just filled a couple of really important positions for us, for me. Um, as you know, you know, we're managing this building, so public works isn't fully staffed. That really impacts us. Finances and staff, et cetera. So we just, um, they just filled the public works director position. So that's exciting. He reached out already to schedule a meeting for next week to come over and see what's what. He actually worked with the city before, so I know him from before. Um, so that's exciting. And then we hired for the first time, to my knowledge, um, an IT uh technology manager, which is huge because we have so many technologies here, public facing, plus our own inside techno, you know, and um, there's not really a, a good degree of coordination on that at the, at the higher level. So this is gonna be really good for the whole city and really good for us and just, um, you know, makes our job so much easier if we have the people that have the expertise that can support us. Um, and also, uh, I believe they're getting close to a human resources director um offer. So some of these positions that really make a difference for us are, are coming. Um, we also started uh like a, I don't know if we'll do it every week, but every couple of weeks, kind of sitting down with the public works facilities maintenance team to just go through our checklist of what is happening with this. Is this done? Is this going to be done? And we went through some important things, including some issues that the restoration concerts had with some cleanliness and and issues and and just trying to work through some of that. And uh, I've been proposed for a long time that if we could just have a meeting, you know, to go through these items, that would be great. So we're gonna, I think that's gonna take off and really very productive and that makes our lives a lot easier to have that partnership. So that's exciting. Those positions getting filled. And that's all that I have.
Good, fantastic. All right. Um, with no further items or comments from staff and or board members, I will now adjourn the meeting at eight twenty four PM. Our next meeting will be November thirteen at seven PM.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Sean.